A lot of money.
She said, that's why I make the big, that's why they pay me the big bucks.
She's smarter than I am.
I was gonna say something, but I didn't.
I heard it anyway.
Rona, your hair looks just lovely.
You're muted, Rona.
Hi, I'm sorry, guys, say what you said. I didn't hear anybody, what?
Cora gave you a compliment.
Oh, thank you.
You really should have heard that, you should write that down.
That was my friend Jenny just calling, and her daughter is in Rome. And she has COVID, so I just wanted to.
No.
I just wanted to tell you, and she's got to get on a plane tomorrow.
Is this Jenny Bill?
Yeah, her daughter has COVID.
Oh no. Because I connected her when she was in London to see Life of Pi, a friend of mine is in. Sorry, I wish she had mild case and.
She, I think she's okay now, I think her temperature's down, but she's got to get on a plane and double mask for ten hours, you know. And I, I don't even know, what do you do if you still have COVID on a plane? I mean, a few, a month ago when we came back, we had a test, but now they don't require it anymore.
Yep.
So people can get on the plane with COVID.
Yep.
That's scary.
Very scary.
It's very scary. Well, but Italy has the highest, one of the highest in Europe, so you know, you can figure maybe a third of the planes gonna have COVID, and just want to travel anyway, that's really freaking to me.
Crazy. Where Bermuda is not playing, they, you have to show documents three times from when you landed to when you got out of there.
I think that Paris did the same thing, I had to show documents before, during, after, at the hotel, I mean, and, and mask all the time.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, I don't either.
Who's three oh one? I wonder.
Cora, look at your text.
I think that's the transcription is.
That's me, I'm three oh one. That's my cellphone backup.
Great. I'm just in search of commissioners, so we'll have a quorum.
Sorry, I can't help you today, Reggie, with that.
I know.
My microphone is working, yay. Can you hear me?
Hey, Julianne.
Okay, great, great, I just wanted to check.
And welcome. So Julianne, am I pronouncing your last name right if I say Breenza?
You are, yeah.
Thank you, I try my best to pronounce people's names right.
It's a good thing to do, yeah.
Yes, yes, people kind of like that. Oh, no problem, thank you. Thank you for being here.
I'm surprised you're upright, Julianne. After the fringe closing in the wee hours, yes.
Yeah, we did it, it happened.
We still have a few minutes. Wonder if I should start calling people. Well Maggie's here, that's good. So we're up to three. Hi Maggie.
Hi.
The six includes me, right?
Not for this, oh, I'm sorry.
So now we have three.
I'm so used to answering.
With Gretchen, we have three. Hi Gretchen.
How many are now on the commission, Reggie?
Eleven.
So the quorum is six.
Yeah, six.
Okay.
We're halfway there. With three minutes to spare. Uh David, are you giving the ED report?
Uh, I am not, uh, I don't believe it has to be given, I think it, once it's recorded.
I mean, he wants it submitted?
Yes. I think it'll be posted online and so on, so.
If there are any highlights to it that you'd like to, uh, speak to?
Sure, I'll take a quick, quick look.
Great, thanks.
Is there anybody I should call, like, you know, text Natalie or someone?
Yes, if you could, because we have me, you, Maggie, uh, Mariah's on, and Gretchen. So that's four with Mariah. We needed two.
Where's Stacy?
Not here yet.
Where's Hector?
Not here yet.
I think he's just in.
Oh Hector's here, yes. So that's two, three, four, five. One more. With one minute to go. Thank you for those who are here. Hi Hector.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Mariah.
How are you?
I'm great, thank you, how are you?
How's everybody, hi, how's everything?
Good, good.
I'm here as a member of the public Hector, and think, in, in case you think you're seeing a ghost.
Yum.
Stacy's calling in now.
Oh, great.
And Reggie, it's David, uh, I took a look at Haran's report, and there, there are just some updates that things are moving along in terms of, uh, processing.
I'll, I'll let you say that then, just so that something was said.
Super.
Stacy has arrived, hello Stacy.
Hi. We have a quorum.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that, guys.
No problem. The meeting will come to order. The time is now five thirty PM on Monday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two. This is a regular meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm an African American, I can't talk today, an African American man wearing a blue shirt with white, uh, anchors on it, so I'm being sailor today. I'll now call the roll, when you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Lee Banks.
Present.
Cora Masters Berry.
Hello, I'm here.
Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Quanise Floyd. Natalie Hopkinson. Kimberlin Kenny. Mariah Hall Rooney.
Present.
Carla Sims. Hector Torres.
Present.
Gretchen Warden.
Present.
And I am here as well. A quorum is present. This meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform, and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel for public viewing. An electronic recording will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. This meeting is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nkotchank and Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies, legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events, and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. If there are no objections to the agenda, it will stand as adopted. Is there any objection to the agenda? Here are no objections, the agenda stands as adopted. Next is the approval of the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Here are no corrections, the minutes stand as approved. Welcome everyone, thank you for being present. As I'm sure you know, our group is a little smaller than usual. Several of our members completed their terms on June thirtieth. Rona, Cece, Mary Ann, Jose, and Derek. Of the five, Rona and Mary Ann had both been on the commission for over ten years. Jose for nine, Cece for five and a half, and Derek for three. They represent a diverse set of backgrounds and experiences, and yet their lives all intersected with the arts, whether as practitioners or patrons or both. Mary Ann was an art teacher in the New York City school system, and later served as a special assistant to the first ever Secretary of Education, organized in a nationwide student art exhibit for the inauguration of the new US Department of Education. Rona practiced as an attorney before going on to get a master's degree in the history of decorative art. Like Mary Ann, she's been a passionate supporter of arts education, establishing and sharing a task force to create an arts education policy for the district. For over twenty years, Jose has served as a spokesperson and public affairs specialist for the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. He and his husband are practically a DC institution themselves, as fixers at almost every opening night of every play in town, with their dramatic fashion sense on full display. Cece probably has the most solid arts background of any commissioner, holding both bachelor's and master's degree in art history, and serving formerly as the Director of the James Runwick Alliance. Derek was the first person the Washington Nationals hired when the team moved from Montreal to DC, serving as their Director of Ticketing Operations, a role similar to the one he holds now at the Kennedy Center. Derek was Chief of Staff at OCTFME, regularly working closely with CAH, and even serving as the agency's interim director for several weeks. So, I just wanted to say to this unique group, thank you for your passion, your perspective, and your service. Thank you very much, and I'm sure we all join in thanking them for their service on the commission. Uh, now I'd like to recognize Julianne Breenza, founding director of Capitol Fringe for Public Comments. Ms. Breenza?
Hello, I'm Julianne, I just, uh, wanted to come to this meeting and talk about my experience in doing the Capitol Fringe Festival that just closed on last night. Um, so in preparation for the festival and also getting my grant agreement from the commission, uh, our GOS grant agreement, in section two, item Q, it read that all of our employees, agents, subcontractors who provide agreement-related goods or perform services in the District of Columbia facilities, work sites, or have in-person contact with any other persons in order to complete their work under the contract or grant agreement, have either been fully vaccinated with, against COVID nineteen, or be granted a grant to your contractor, one of the vaccination certificate exemptions. So I looked, you know, the mayoral order that this links to, um, states that fully vaccinated is with a booster. So when I got the grant agreement, I did begin to collect all of our contractors, those who received ten ninety-nines, their, um, vaccination cards, because I thought that we would have to submit them as part of our interim or final reports. So when I did the applications for the festival, the artists who are contractors, because they receive a ten ninety-nine for their payment for the, their performances in the festival, because they received seventy percent of the ticket revenue, they attested in the applications that they were fully vaccinated with the definition that I got from my GOS grant agreement, and from the mayoral order that it linked to. Um, they also attested to this in their, um, agreements that they signed a month after they had applied. That on July first, that was when they all had to upload their actual proof of vaccination and their ID. And that's when I learned that they were not all fully vaccinated. And we actually only had eight, um, productions in the festival that actually were fully vaccinated as tied to the, um, what are, what's connected to our GOS grant. So of course I kind of, you know, freaked out, and wasn't really sure how to deal with it, so basically in nine days, I tried to get a thousand tests, um, in various ways, um, which did involve, um, reaching out to the commission, then getting to the mayor, mayor's office of community affairs, which connected me to, um, the Ward Two person, because we were in Ward Two in Georgetown. Um, I will just be honest and say that that person totally ghosted me. Um, and what I ended up doing was spending six thousand dollars to purchase tests, um, set up a testing site, and, um, spent seventy-five hours, uh, testing, and about, uh, it was twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars that we spent on testing. In talking with the commission, our grant officer during this time, I did sort of learn a couple things too. One, I have a board chair, not a board chair, he's just a board member, he's one of our founding board members, he also gets funds from the commission. And of course I contacted my board when this first came about, and he then contacted his grant officer, his grant officer, about what is this, you know, what is in our agreements, what, what do we actually have to do as grantees of the commission about this? And he was told by his grant officer that there was nothing at all in the GOS, um, agreement that states anything like this, so he of course reached out to me and told me I was, you know, reading it wrong or something, and I'm like, here it is, screenshot, section two, item Q. In talking with David and Terrell, it's, I, I was sort of told that it's like an honor, like, uh, honor system that's being used to do this, um, and that there was a grant update, I didn't get a grant update, I've checked, I don't have a grant update that tells me that it's an honor system. And I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm here today to tell you all of this because we did have COVID, we did have positives in our testing site, we did have canceled performances. It was something that we had to mediate the whole time during the festival, and I wanted you guys as people who are probably looking at what the languages and the grant agreements that go out for the next fiscal year, just thinking about how this really does impact specifically the performing arts. When I bought the tests, I asked the company I bought them from, who is the main, who is your main customer? And their response to me was theaters. And so I just, I just wanna, I'm just here today to tell you this information and hope that we can sort of get to a place where we are actually checking people and also using proper language when we ask and have things that say full vaccination, because from my experience of taking in vaccination cards from two hundred and fifty individuals that participated in the festival, it's not, it's not about like access or, uh, vaccinations are not necessarily tied to race or access, it really runs the full gamut of who is fully vaccinated and who is not. And I think the more as an arts community, we can just speak honestly about it, it will really help us move forward as we continue to deal with this for, in the years to come. So that's all I wanted to share today.
Well, thank you, first, thank you for bringing this issue to our attention, because the commission is both, both interested in the wealth and, and well-being of everyone that's connected with us, and certainly we want to make sure that our policies, our grants, our language is clear and precise and adhered to, so thank you for bringing that to us. And I promise you, we will get to the bottom of this issue and make sure that we address it going forward.
All right. All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap out of this meeting, but I will say I do watch them on YouTube, so I'll.
Great.
I'll, I'll watch the rest on YouTube, okay? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Have a great rest of your summer.
Thank you, thank you very much, same to you. Um, the channel, the channel now recognizes Will Murray for Public Comments, Mr. Murray?
Hi, good evening, everybody, um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, getting some thumbs up. Um, and I think we were gonna put together a quick, uh, PowerPoint presentation as well, Patrick?
Yeah, one moment.
Excellent, okay. Um, so yeah, Pat, am I good to dive in?
Yes.
It sounds great, okay, um, good evening, everyone, uh, I have, I've never presented here before, I'm very grateful, uh, to take a couple minutes of your time today, um, to, uh, to talk to you, um, in pursuit of, um, putting together a, a really cool music festival. Um, I've, I've kind of been into this for a couple of years, and, um, I think this could definitely align with a lot of, uh, the commission's, um, goals, and, um, I, I kind of serendipitously ran into Pat about a year ago and started talking about this, and he said, hey, maybe there'd be something really cool here, so that's kind of what brings me to the meeting tonight. Um, so, uh, uh, to give some quick background, and just to give you a sense of the kind of thing I can do, and, and then to see how we can tie it into your, um, kind of strategic priorities here. Um, uh, yeah, I wanted to show a couple photos, and then specifically, the, kind of the ask I'm, I'm hoping for tonight is, um, any kind of connections, uh, into the DC underground music and art scene, so that's really kind of what I'm hoping, um, I could get your advice and mentorship on out of this meeting. Um, but, uh, to kind of give you an idea of what I'm hoping to do, um, in collaboration with you guys, I wanted to just give you a quick sense of my background, so if you can direct your attention to, uh, the photo here. Um, so, uh, this kind of all started for me when I was in college, and I wound up in this wild situation where I was living in an indoor swimming pool, turned apartment, turned underground music venue, um, where Pete Buttigieg played the piano. So I was going to college at Notre Dame at the time, and I don't know if you guys can see in the back there on the ladder, that's Pete Buttigieg, um, he just happened to be the mayor at the time while I was going to Notre Dame. Um, current Secretary of Transportation, and, uh, just kind of got to know him. Um, and this was this amazing indoor swimming pool music venue that had nationally touring acts and just incredibly, um, high-quality music. Um, and if you can go to the next slide, Pat? Um, yeah, you can see just this beautiful ambiance, this amazing community vibe, next slide. This is the deep end of this pool, um, you could climb up that ladder to get to my room, it was kind of a, a couple, uh, bedroom apartment there, where I lived with a couple other folks, and we kind of operated this as a community space, next slide. Um, and then this is kind of a wide view, and you can see you could fit about a hundred fifty people into this space. Um, so just, uh, in case anybody was, was concerned, definitely not looking to, to do another kind of, uh, music show in somebody's apartment right now, although that, that scene is interesting, I know that's not, uh, probably not something as big with you, but the other cool thing that kind of spun, spun out of this is I got to direct, um, a, a big music festival, um, and this is kind of where my music festival background comes into play. So you may have heard of the big festival, South by Southwest, anybody, any nods? Okay, I got a couple nods, awesome, so, uh, so we decided to mix things up, and we, we called our festival South by South Bend, uh, because we're in South Bend, Indiana. We held on to that title until South by Southwest threatened to sue us, um, so we had to change the name after that. But, uh, it was, it was this amazing festival, I never knew I could do anything like that, and if you go to the next slide, Pat? Um, so here are a couple photos, and we had all genres, so kind of scoping this very wide genre and bringing together a lot of different elements and groups of the community, we launched this festival, me and a bunch of college students during our final exam week, it was just totally crazy story, next slide. Um, and we got twelve hundred people in total to show up to this festival, and just an amazing community event, next slide. Um, this is actually, uh, you can't see too many people in this photo, but this is a band called Rat Boys, that's now a nationally touring band, if anybody's heard of Julian Baker, they did a, a European tour with her, um, just got back from that, and they're my good, uh, roommates, lived with me in the swimming pool, next slide. Uh, next slide, just giving you a feel for some of the different parts of the show, this is actually another indoor swimming pool that we turned into a music venue, next slide. Um, what are the odds, right, there's me having fun, uh, speaking out up there, I just love doing this kind of creative stuff, have a real passion for it, next slide. Uh, and then there's Mayor Pete again, um, uh, supporting us, um, and I was just told that my camera's off, so, um, hey, hey, this is who's talking to you guys, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so, um, uh, yeah, very cool, you know, very, um, uh, good demonstration of kind of the civic tie-in here, um, of a music festival to kind of bring in, um, the political and, and help build that strong community, so that's what I specialize in, I love doing that stuff. And since I kind of moved back to the DC, Virginia area, um, I've started plugging in, but, um, I need help, so, uh, so really, um, right now, you know, I'm coming to you guys, telling you a little bit what I can do, letting you know that I am on it, I'm open on this, um, but definitely don't know what I'm, everything that I'm getting into, and would love any help and advice, all genres, um, any kinds of folks who are kind of connected into the underground music and art scene, I would love to talk to you offline, um, schedule, you know, a time for a Skype or a video call or a coffee or something like that, and just, uh, kind of see where we can get this going, and, and hopefully accomplish some, some common goals. Um, so I think that's, that's about it, and, uh, yeah, I think that the last slide I had there at the end, uh, was just some contact info, so I can get that to you guys separately through Pat, um, but I have you to take any questions or, or any advice that comes to mind.
Well, this sounds great, uh, it's really intriguing to me, and what I'm gonna suggest is that we get back to you, uh, and perhaps David, uh, can take the lead in that our deputy director, in the absence of our executive director. I was echoing, sorry. Um, so we will get back to you on this, but I find this really interesting and something we should think through.
I may suggest, uh, perhaps you may want to contact the Dupont Underground, that they have a venue that is very much appropriate for this kind of festival, music festival. So, that's, uh, Anna Harvey is the executive director. You may want to touch base with her on availability, et cetera. But this would not be on a permanent basis, it would be just festival to festival.
Very good suggestion, thank you Hector.
Okay.
And thank you again, thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, before we proceed, I'd like to make note that a number of other commissioners have joined the call since the roll call, Quanise is here, Natalie's here, and Carla's here. So of the eleven of us on the commission, ten of us are here, Kimber sent a note earlier that she could not join us today, so ten of eleven here, and I want to thank everyone for your attendance. Um, at our June meeting, glass sculptor Tim Tate gave us an overview of his work, which he calls Queer Glass. Today we're joined by one of his colleagues from the Washington Glass School, Michael Janis. As a child of a Chinese Filipino immigrant and grandson of Greek and German immigrants, the family history's and struggle to assimilate has been a perpetual source of Michael Janis's narrative work that deals with understanding identity. After a twenty-year career as an architect in the United States and Australia, Janis returned to the US with a focus on working with glass. In two thousand and five, Janis became the co-director of the Washington Glass School, and in two thousand and sixteen, he was recognized by Mayor Bowser with the Mayor's Art Award for Excellence in the Arts. The commission has awarded multiple grants to Michael over the years, and we are proud to have several of his artworks in our Art Bank collection. Please join me in welcoming Michael Janis. Michael?
Hey, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here, thanks Reggie, and I want to thank all the commissioners, uh, everyone there has been a great support, uh, and I do have a PowerPoint, so Patrick, if you're able to put that on, I'd appreciate that. And we'll see how that goes. Okay. And just to get that running.
I need to assign you, uh, control, so, uh, one moment. So I think you have control now.
Yep, let's see if it works. Not yet. Okay. Okay, you can see a little bit of my background, you know, I grew up in the Midwest, and I always wanted to be an artist, but my parents said, oh, that's not gonna happen, so I started studying architecture, and I became an architect in Chicago. And I was an architect there for ten years, and then I got recruited to Australia, where I was, uh, an architect there for ten years. And after nine eleven, my wife, who was an architect but left the field, had said she wanted to work for the US government. So we came out to DC, and I also had become a glass artist in the meantime. I started studying at different places, and one of the places I started studying at was the Washington Glass School. And at the Washington Glass School, we do a lot about, um, connecting with people usually in their next careers. And at the Washington Glass School, we do a lot about connecting with people usually in their next career as they retire. And we teach them about using glass as a medium for artistic expression and try and incorporate a lot of people who are from different medias to start using it as a, as a element within their artwork. We also work with a number of other artists and have a studio space that they can be part of and have a way of sharing resources. A number of artists in the area also use this as a resource to make components for their artwork. Chris Shea makes components in this artwork you see there is actually part of the Smithsonian's Runwick Collection. The glass studio also does a lot of public art. So we're able to create large scale artworks for the outdoor environment. And one of the projects we worked with was with, for Ward Seven for the new healthcare center that came out. And the Community Gateway Arch, we had worked with the community to make the glass components that went into the artwork. So we introduced the community to a medium they normally didn't have access to. We had a series of workshops that allowed them to create it and make the artwork that was from the area rather than something that was imposed onto the area. That's unexpected. And I think I just. Think I got cut out. Can you hear me?
We can still hear you.
Okay, somehow I got knocked out by that.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay.
We can see you.
But I'm trying to find where you guys are.
Community glass making is.
Yeah. Okay. I got it again. So this is the sculpture that we had done where we had made it so it was lit at night. And so at daytime and nighttime it presents well. We had done some other artwork pieces around town, including in Arlington. And we had also done the glass doors for the Library of Congress. And those glass doors were a wonderful historical significance. And it was even kind of nice that the National Guard protected the sculpture after the January 6 events. I'm going to give you a little bit of information about my drawing technique. I actually use crushed glass powder to make the imagery. So all the images that are in my stuff is actually made out of frit powder or just powder that's pushed around and melted onto the sheets of glass. I also a lot of times use images where I'm kind of telling a narrative about my family and the history and identity. I've worked on a lot of pieces that involves using the cast glass and dimensionally. So my pieces have a little bit more of a shape and shadow and the, the images are, have a lot of depth to it. And I'm just going to kind of take you through what goes through a drawing. So I'm using powders to just keep on layering up and every firing builds just a little bit more color and a little bit depth to it. But it's a very labor intensive proper process because you had to fire it each time to get the colors to mature. So each of these images, you can see how the maturation of the colors and the depth of it goes to make the artwork. So it's a very slow process. It's tedious and that's, you know, being the architect, I know everything about being very detail oriented. And this piece, I believe the DC Commission has in their collection. I've been able to start using abstraction of a more traditional portraiture. And so I'm using colors and a lot more deconstruction for the images. And I've worked on larger scale pieces where now they're much greater size than what our kilns can produce to still have an installation feel to the works. And I've also started getting commissions for public art in hotels and places like that where they've commissioned to make large works. This is at what was the, in DuPont Circle, the, was the Kimpton Hotel. But it's been renamed. Now, if you remember the newspaper, the, the The Onion, they did describe that artwork as the fucking creepiest windows ever. So it did get some press. I've worked with a lot of the DC governments. We had made artwork for Mayor Williams to take when he went on a tour of Africa. He made, we made the artwork that represented Washington DC. I was there when Mayor Gray had signed the friendship agreement with the sister city of Sunderland City Council. And that had allowed me to become a Fulbright scholar because the, you have to have the University of Sunderland be tying into it. So both Tim and I became Fulbright scholars because of that support. Mayor Bowser had awarded me the Mayor's Arts Award for Visual Arts. And, and it's just something that I really love the commission on the arts and humanities. I mean, it really has supported me for so long and it allowed for so much growth from the automatics that they supported to other versions of automatic where we brought over international artists for an exhibition under the support of the commission. We had, had gone internationally with Clay. So we started broadening what our mediums are and the interaction was. And, you know, anything I can do with the DC Commission, any events that they show, I want to be part of it. That is such an important part for my growth and that is something that I want to really kind of pay forward. You know, within the art scene, when you start saying the support has allowed me to start getting pressed to let me be covered in the Washington Post, to be shown at the Smithsonian, to have things where the Phillips Collection had my work as part of their show. And then I, I try and be part of it by saying I'm going to be giving talks at the Public Library and this has helped me become a stronger artist where I'm showing it other cities around the town. So in Pittsburgh, in Detroit, and always they're saying this is a Washington DC thing that DC glass art is actually changing the scenarios. The Museum of Glass had acquired artwork from Tim Erwin, who's another director here and myself for their permanent collection. And then we started showing as a gallery for the art shows during Miami. So WGS Contemporary is taking artists from the DC area to show them at the international art fairs. And most recently, Tim and I had collaborated to make artwork that represented the USA at the Venice Biennale. There's a sister event called Glass Dress where they're bringing glass artists, glass with world artists such as Ai Weiwei to say that this is how you can use glass as an expressive sculptural medium. And we had met with their directors in DC to talk about what we could do with them. And Tim had shown there previously, but we want to make an impressive large scale piece. So we had done a series of designs that we actually early on started focusing about global warming. We also involved Chris Shea, who's a metal artist. And we just started developing a, it's, just started developing a, it's just over six feet wide by almost eight feet tall piece. That was going to be representing a story about climate change and the ability that people have to ignore the warning signs of it. So we had done castings of glass. These are huge scale castings. We actually had made the molds and the glass was cast in Murano. And then assembled there on site. But you can see a lot of Tim Tate's imagery in the glass and then my imagery. We had to ship off the components to go to Italy there in time. Chris Shea's bronze work was part of it. And then it was just part of the Venice Biennale, hoisting it into the space. And it's on exhibit now until November. So it, it has gotten a fair bit of attention. You can see the scale of that piece. It's, it's pretty impressive, the scale of it. It's certainly a heavy piece. And it got a lot of attention for the show because of the size and it included the international press had focused in on it where they talked about that it was about climate change. And then just a little note about, also recently I've been named one of the finalists for a Contemporary Craft Prize, which is in glass and it was focusing on transformation. And this is a prize that they give out by Contemporary Craft and they, it's a biennial award. So hopefully fingers crossed in September, they'll be making the announcement as to who the winners are. And again, all of this is possible by the support that I get from the DC Commission and I, that's why I'm saying anytime the DC Commission wants me to do something, I'm there to lend a hand and be part of it. That's the end of my presentation.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It's always very interesting for us to know the journey of our artists and the journey of an artist. So thank you for that context. And of course, for us to understand the full extent of the impact that our grantees are having and the work you're doing. So we thank you very much for that. Thank you. I will now ask David to give us sort of a brief sort of few words on the executive director report. Hrona is a little under the weather and could not join us today. Her report was submitted. So you can still read the full report, but David, do you want to give us sort of the Cliff Note version?
Of course. Happy to. Hello, everyone.
I thought, I'm sorry, Reggie. I thought we had another public comment.
I didn't see it on my list. I'm sorry, do we?
Yes.
Who said yes?
Rona.
Rona.
Sorry about that. I was trying to follow the rules. I was told to stick to my script, but if Rona would like to make a comment, we'll let you do that. David, if you can hold for a minute. Rona? Oh, Rona.
Muted. You're muted, Rona.
Hi, sorry. I just got a note from Patrick that it was approved. So sorry, Reggie, to butt in then you didn't know, but I wanted, first of all, I'm Rona Friedman. I'm a white woman with blonde hair and a former commissioner as a few weeks ago. I decided after 15 years as a commissioner, it was time for others to serve on the commission and bring new viewpoints. It's really been a privilege to serve with all of you and with the staff for so many years. And since the appointment of Reggie Van Lee's chair and through his leadership on the task force, I've really seen a lot of growth on the commission regarding equity and access. As well as in the grant giving policies, procedures we follows and in communications with the public. And I'm sure this will continue with Reggie and I look forward to following the commission's progress with great interest as the year goes by. And before I go, I just want to congratulate our chair, Reggie Van Lee, on his newest endeavor, an appointment to the nominating committee of the Tonys for a three-year term. So that is really impressive. And I just didn't want to miss saying that. So thank you. And I will now stop my video and commute.
Well, first, thank you. Thank you for your many, many years of service to the commission and some of us were able to salute you and toast you some time ago. So thank you for that. Thank you for the very kind and constructive comments today. We will miss you terribly on the commission, but we'd love to have you still come to the meetings, send us notes, counsel me as you have in this past year. And thank you so much. And, and thank you for the congrats on the Tony thing. I think it's a double edged sword because now I have to attend every Tony eligible production, whether I want to see it or not, whether I'm going to like it or not, I have to see it. I'm not allowed to offer my perspective to anybody. So I can't talk about the things that I saw. But if any of you are passing through New York at a time when I have that extra ticket, you're welcome to join me. But thank you. Thank you again.
Karen Van Lee?
Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge Commissioner Friedman for, for all of her work, particularly on the, recently on the bylaws, which were really quite important to our work as a body. But also just on a personal note, when I joined the commission, Rona extended a hand to me and offered to be helpful and helped me to get on boarded onto the commission. And I'm quite grateful for that. And I just wanted to express my appreciation, Rona, for all that you did for, for all of us.
Thank you, Maggie. That's very.
I'd like to add also that Rona finished the handbook for new commissioners. So as we start to bring in new commissioners, we actually have a handbook thanks to Rona.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Applause. Applause all around. Thank you so much, Rona.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now David.
Hello again. I'm David Markham, the deputy director here at the Arts Commission. I'm a middle aged white man with short gray hair, a bit of a beard and a check shirt. You, as Reggie mentioned, you've all received the, our executive director's report from Hrona. So I'm just going to touch on some pieces of that. And since we last met, we have pushed out almost $7 million in enhancement grants to 144 organizations that receive general operating support from us. This, in years past, we have pushed out enhancement awards partway through the year, but this year it's, it's been, the amounts have been pretty significant. We've also launched the capacity building initiative. We have 88 organizations, I believe, participating in that and they're grouped into communities of practice. Looking at various capacity building areas over the next couple of months. And then we're almost ready to launch or to announce awards for the relief and recovery program for both individuals and organizations. We had about just under 350 individual applicants and about 30 organizational applicants. And so we're getting ready to announce those awards tomorrow, but we're anticipating funding an average of 90% of those awardees. I will leave it there.
Great. Thank you. All good news. And our thanks to you and to the staff for all the work it takes to get those grants out. And all the work that the commission does on a daily basis. So thank you to everyone. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, Kimber would not, could not join us today and she sent a note to that effect. So Brian, Iyandi, I think you're going to give the treasures report, the finance report, rather.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, that is correct. Thank you, Reggie. Evening, everyone. My name is Brian Iyandi. I'm the resource allocation officer. I am coming tonight in a polo shirt that's orange with black and white stripes. I'm Afro Latino male. And good news, good news, good news. The reports and Patrick, if you can, would you please pull up the reports for me? Really appreciate it. The first report is going to be the budget balance report. Yes, sir. Can we make that larger, please? And so what I would like to report at this time is, is basically showing the, the budget is $49 million as we stated last time. All of the funding that we had planned to load is loaded. As David just alluded to, we're in the process or the agency's in the process of sending out the notifications to the grantees. And then the, what will happen afterwards will be the execution of the grant agreements between the grantee and the director, and then we can get out the purchase orders. At this point, it, it does appear that most, if not all of the enhancement money is still not obligated. And like I said, it goes through the first, it has to be, the purchase of the agreements have to be agreed upon between the grantee and the agency. So what we can show, what, what this report reflects is basically where we stand in terms of the balances that are available as well as the amounts that are encumbered. I had an extensive conversation with Reggie and Kimber during our finance committee meeting with regards to where we were fiscally in terms of grant agreements, how many were executed versus how many were still to be executed and we're in pretty good shape. We showed and as we explained to Reggie and Kimber that the amount that of grant agreements that have no activity on the meaning, the grantee has yet to submit an invoice for is less than 2% of the total amount awarded. To date, we have 959 or 958 grant awards. I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna pause for a second to see if there's any questions, comments or concerns.
I don't have a question, but I would like to punctuate a couple of things you said. We, we are working with a $49 million budget for this year. That is phenomenal. Now, because some of that was money that came in from collected taxes and stuff, we won't necessarily have $49 million again. So I don't want you to manage your expectations around us having that, but we can applaud. having that. But we can applaud the fact that this year, we're able to help so many organizations and so many artists in a way we haven't in the past, because this is the largest budget we've had ever. The other point you made is that we are doing everything we can to get those funds out to the grantees in a timely fashion. Getting an award is one thing. Getting the money in the bank is more important. And we did a real analysis of where we are against that. And to Brian's point, less than 2%, that's like 10 or 12 of the grantees are still in the delayed payment and there are reasons behind that, et cetera. But our goal is to make that number zero. That even a small number like 2% is not satisfactory for us. We want to make sure everybody gets paid in a timely fashion. But there are all sorts of reasons that cause things to happen. We don't have a double-digit problem. We have a single-digit and a small problem, but it is still a problem and our intention is to fix it. I just wanted to make those two points, Brian.
Thank you. And yes, so, and please, I say this every meeting and I will probably continue to say it throughout. If you have not received your payments or if there's any issues with your invoices, please take the time to reach out to your grants management specialists. If you cannot reach them, please go to our website. There are the email addresses for everyone or for the managers and we'd be happy to help out or, you know, direct the calls or the inquiries to the appropriate people. But we have to really begin the closeout phase. The district is winding down its fiscal operations for fiscal year '22 and we're about to ramp up for '23. So, to the extent possible, please, please, please get your invoices in as quickly as possible. If you have prerequisites by way of interim reports, please also get those in as soon as possible. At the next page, Patrick, you can switch to the next page, is basically a synopsis of where we are by program in terms of the number of grant awards or direct grant purchase orders that have been established. At this point, the largest number that is outstanding is the Fab Relief Grants. And as you all may know, those were the agreements that were executed in May. And so, what happens is based on the response from the grantees, how quickly they get the information back to us and complete their prerequisite paperwork, the actual purchase orders can be established. So, we're in the process now of establishing those. We have 30 in the pipeline of the 112. And when I say in the pipeline, meaning the requisitions have been entered. There are more that are actually going through the approval process now and my team is entering. So, we're doing pretty good, but I would like to see this number as close to zero as possible, especially with the anticipated enhancements that Mr. Marky just spoke about. So, again, I ask, please, if we can help in any way, reach out to your contact person here at CAH, but we need to get those grant agreements in as soon as possible. We'd like to pay out as quickly as possible and not accrue any invoices to the extent possible. That concludes what I have to say, unless there's any questions or comments.
Well, I would like to give the commissioners a chance to ask questions or comment. We've not historically had this sort of visibility and engagement, understanding the numbers. Kimber and the Finance Committee worked very hard to pull out the important stuff and share it in this sort of way, but I don't want to run past this. This is important. So, I want to make sure if anybody has, and I'm going to do the Reggie thing, of course, and go through the list and ask the question. Stacy, does this make sense to you? Are you good with who we are from a finance standpoint?
Yes, I'm, it's, it sounds really good. I'm in the car, so I can't, I'm not on camera right now.
No problem. That's fine. Thank you. Cora?
Yeah, it sounds great, but you know, still, I'm learning and I have a question. We have a lot of money and I know we're re-imagining and how we're doing things, which is great. But I'm wondering if also some of our existing programs, which I'm sure we'll get around to reviewing at some point, that we're doing, are we looking at that to put more money in? And I'm specifically thinking about Art All Night. There was a certain budget level for them last year. Has the level of support for these organizations, for these events gone up this year? And if they have, by how much? And then, what is the formula to determine who gets how much? Have you looked at it in terms of the percentage of the money that they have in their budget? So, what happens to that? Because that's, that's a month away. It's going to be in September. I'm really happy about that. But it's a great event. At least it is, you know, you know, you were there last year, Brian. Award eight was off the chain. I mean, like, almost a mile of stuff. So, how do you, how do you reward and support and encourage that? With the money we have, look like this would be an opportunity to feed into that kind of process. So, that's to you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that question, Ms. Berry. That is a great question. And being, the first time being out there to see what it was all about and actively participating, I totally agree with you. That question is really pointed towards Huron. Traditionally, what we have done is we've allotted somewhere between $125,000, $150,000 each year. But what we also do, and I understand, what we also do is we look at what we have left over towards the end of the year and we review any subsequent requests for additional funding from DSLBD. What I must also point out is that 95%, if 90 or 95% of the funding for this event comes from CAH. There is not much funding coming from other organizations or other agencies. I have encouraged Director Whitfield and her team to actively pursue maybe some other partnerships within the government. But yes, to your, to your question, Ms. Berry, I do believe that that's a question that we should pose or that I would ask Huron in terms of our support to that particular event. I do see that David has his hand up, so I'll pass it to David.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask if David perhaps had something to say on that.
Yeah. And thanks, Brian. Thanks, Reggie. Just to add to what Brian said, last year, we funded the event to the tune of $150,000. And, and so, the commitment this year is $200,000. So, it's a 33% increase on last year.
My hope was since our overall budget increased, that that would be an increase. But, but I would like to take this part offline with Huron, the Finance Committee, Brian, David, et cetera, to really think about, are we doing all that we can? I know it's short order because it's just a month from now, but if we can make some impact there, we should.
If I may just add one other, I'm sorry, Gretchen, go ahead, please, because I'm sure you have a good comment as well.
Yeah. Trust me, having worked with Art All Night since it began, much, there's so much more that could be done. Cora, thank you so much for your position on that and for raising that to everyone's awareness. There is so much more that could be done. There's so many more artists that could participate. We need more money for that particular event. And I speak from someone who has been involved with it since its very beginning. And it's citywide now. It's totally citywide. So, we absolutely would appreciate that kind of thing coming from an Art All Night standpoint. Thank you.
Well, I commit to us looking at this carefully. Quickly, we only have a month to do it. So, I'm going down my list now. Maggie, comments on Finance Committee and the conversations we've had around finance?
Yeah, just two questions, Chairman Van Lee. One, it seems as if in our last discussion, we talked about being a bit surprised by some surplus budget dollars. Do you feel like we're in a better position now to anticipate any surpluses and do adequate planning?
I actually would defer to Brian on that one as well.
In the spirit of what the conversations were, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, I would say there's a lot of work that we could still do. I don't know that we have the dialogue that's necessary, that Reggie anticipated or that I, as I understand from Reggie. Reggie's charge has always been that we be, we stand ready, that should a trough of money become available, that we have an idea to match that trough of money to do something with. I don't know for certain. I have not seen where we identified a circumstance where we've had some fund, an initiative on standby that we've initiated or acted upon. So, I would say that we still have some work to do.
Thank you for standing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Maggie.
Yeah, just to follow on, it's really building on Commissioner Berry's question, which is she and others have raised programs that the commission feels are worthy of funding. So, the second part of my question is, how can we be very diligent in making sure that we understand the critical need that's out there? We can anticipate that need and use the surplus funding accordingly. I just feel like we need to operationalize that better, it sounds like, based on what you're saying, Brian.
Yeah, I have two responses, if I may, Brian. The first is, the categories that are spent to some extent are dictated by the legislation. So, certain percentages have to go to certain categories. And so, we're bound to that. But the bigger point that Brian was making, I've requested that each of the committees create their wish list of how we'd like to spend money. And so, if money comes in at the last minute, we've already pre-thought how we'd like to spend the money and how we'd like to prioritize it. Because we can't tell a priori if extra tax money or uncollected tax money comes in. We can't tell that. We know the categories. We don't know the amounts. So, to at least cover part of your question, I think we need to create that prioritized wish list. So, when the money comes, we have it. But by having ongoing transparency around what money does come in and the categories it can fall into, we can turn on a dime. I don't think that, and I can't speak directly because I wasn't here, but I don't think that transparency existed as much in the past. And so, people just weren't aware of the categories, didn't understand where the money was coming from, et cetera. So, we cleaned up some of that, but some of it, we have the mercy of the way the dollars have to be spent percentages-wise and what actually comes in and when it comes in. But Brian, if I missed, if I misspoke something, Brian, please correct me.
No, you haven't misspoken anything. I just think that the, the way that the committees have been set up now, I think we're, we're in a good position to have those ideas and those things, those initiatives bubble up to possibly the Executive Committee. And I think that's probably the best place I would recommend that that discussion be, really take flight with Huron and David at the Executive Committee, where you guys can really say exactly what it is that you need. And I'll stop there, because it's still ultimately the decision between the Executive Committee and the CAH leadership.
So, Maggie, did we adequately address your question?
Yes, Chairman Van Lee. Thank you.
Back to us, the Executive Committee. Thank you. Going down my list, Quanise, did you have any comments or questions about the finance report?
No, I just wanted to say, I think it's really great that, you know, we have the highest budget ever. But a quick question, David, how many people do you have on staff?
So, we have just under 40 and that includes a couple of contractors and a couple of part-time folks.
And how many are grants managers?
We probably have got about 12, 14, I would say, grant managers. And we are adding three more. So, this year and beginning of the next.
I just, yeah, I just wanted us to be mindful, like although we are getting more money, we also have to be mindful of like capacity and bringing, making sure that we're bringing on additional staff that could handle that capacity. Because if we are burning staff out, then we're, you know, we're not creating a great impact for the community, because things will go out a lot slower and there'll be issues. So, we just want to make sure that, you know, there's opportunity to expand, especially the grants team, so that if there's more money, we can bring on more folks and, and make sure that community members can get their money in, you know, a fast process.
Great. Thank you. And I'm making a note. I'm going to summarize when we finish. And sorry to labor this, but historically, we've not really delved into the finance, finances in the way we, I think we should have. And so, I've observed finance committees that make their report and we move on to the next thing. I'm not that person. I want the commissioners engaged in this and responsible in understanding. So, I'll contain it down my list. Natalie?
Yes. So, my question also is that, so I know we did enhancements for organizations. I wonder if we also could do enhancements or at least increase the grant amount for the individual artist grants? Like, I'm just trying to think about, especially if we have excess money. I mean, to me, it seems like one of the most pressing issues we have is like the state of like our artists in the city and their ability to survive and make art here. And so, you know, have we thought about enhancing theirs, their stipend? Because I think, what is it, $10,000 for the individual artists? I mean, have we thought about increasing that as a way, one of the ways to, to spend the extra money?
So, Natalie, this is David again. And this year, we increased the ceiling used to be 10,000 and this year, we raised the ceiling to 12,500. The Fellowship Grant, the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program Grant, is one that we've increased steadily in the last couple of years. It's now almost $3 million. And then, we have the Relief Grant that we're hoping to announce tomorrow. We had just under 350 individual applicants. And at the moment, about 305 of them are yeses, which is great. And of course, we're still trying to make sure that we have every, everything from applicant, so we can get as many of them across the finish line as possible. So, so we are very aware of the need for individual artists and our desire to keep them as residents of the district.
Yeah. I mean, I just think, you know, that might be something, just to think about, just as a rule, just increasing the amount even more than 1,200, 500. And then, the other thing, you know, I was thinking about, I like the idea of sort of anticipating, because from what I understand, people who are on the commission, this is just a thing. There's always this extra money and then there's this decision. So, I like the idea of thinking about it ahead of time. And, you know, one idea that I want to throw out there is Reggie, I don't know, weeks ago, we talked about, you know, exploring other ways to support artists, like, you know, health insurance and, you know, capacity building and giving them sort of like, giving them individual help, like capacity as individual artists too. And so, you know, you know, I'm thinking that that could be also something that we think about. And then, much like in, I think with the D C government, with the council as a whole, when they have extra money, they have an automatic policy that says it goes into the housing trust, you know. So, I mean, maybe like as a commission, we could sort of think about, well, what are, what are the most, the highest needs? And maybe there's some sort of default that some, there's some fund that we are continually supporting with extra money.
I agree. If I could just make a suggestion as well, we have to look at a possible mechanism of how we can change the agreement itself, maybe, to incorporate that if the agency, you know, gets money over and above a certain amount, that it can automatically trigger some level of increase without having to go through the entire process. I don't know that that's possible, but we need to figure something that does that, because as Quanise just says, that's part of the big, that's the lion's share of the, of the issues that we face is going through an RFA process, having the grantees complete the applications and the subsequent documentation that has to be filled out. It's quite cumbersome. So, it might be something that we need to be a little bit more innovative about, maybe, or look to our, look to the City Administrator's Office or somewhere to find out how we can do that, if that's possible.
Good. Good. I'm gonna move us along, because I don't want to delay you too long. But thank you, Natalie. Mariah?
I don't have any questions for Brian. I'm thrilled about the amount that we were able to give out to, through our grants. So, that's it.
Great. Great. Thanks. Carla?
I think Natalie touched on some of what I wanted to raise or ask about. In addition to workshops to help the artist around healthcare, we also need to look at retirement workshops so that they understand, maybe they can take a percentage of some of these grants and start to open up retirement programs for themselves, so they can be more sustainable long after, long after, or as they do their work down the road. The other question that I had was, what is the anticipated increase or decrease in 2023?
The budget, we have the budget for '23, right?
Yes, sir. The, in fact, if you do a comparison now, it would be a decrease. And the reason would be because if you looked at the current budget, we've infused an additional $13 million. But if you compared the, if you compare apples to apples- But if you compared the, if you compare apples to apples, meaning if you compared how we started fiscal year twenty-two and compared it to fiscal year twenty-three, then it looks like we have like a nine, I think it was a nine percent increase. So we do this dance, if for lack of better words. We do this where we look at what additional funding we get. There are three different revenue streams, and we can talk a little bit more about that in the finance committee. But anytime we get an additional funding, Reggie's charge has been for us to identify how we can utilize it. So we try to get that into the budget as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Good. Hector? Hector?
Hector, I think you're on mute.
I know, I'm sorry, okay. I guess soon I'll be discussing with regard to an update on D M P A D. But I I I agree fully with the, with what Natalie Hopkins has mentioned, that we need to support the artists in different ways and in a very direct way. And one of the issues that we will be addressing is issues of financial literacy, not financial literacy, but housing and things of that nature. So let me just kind of hold off to the next, do I get to report? So we could talk about that. But yes, good point, Natalie.
Thanks, Hector. I was gonna say, we're gonna cover one of those points when you speak.
Yeah, right.
Gretchen?
Nothing to add.
So if you will attempt to, I'll attempt a summary. So in as far as budget allocations and increases in budget, we want to make sure that where we have opportunities to have yet more impact in items like Art All Night, in items like extra funding to individual artists. And not only money to artists or relief as we're doing now, but housing, which Hector's gonna talk about, healthcare, retirement, that we are thoughtful about really addressing the needs of our community, arts organizations and artists, and not just sticking to the formula or sticking to the way we've done it in the past. Second, the whole notion of being yet, being as prepared as possible and anticipating as much as possible when we're getting extra funds, either through the wish list that we're gonna talk about, that the committee chairs, the executive committee will pull together, or other mechanisms so that we aren't surprised and then running around trying to figure out how to spend money when we get extra money, to anticipate that. And then certainly the point about the staff size, the staff capacity and the coverage of the staff, so that as we increase budgets and as we do more, that we're aligning the staff with that as well. Now, the staff doesn't need to increase at the same proportion as the budget does, but to have the same staff to do much more work without some sort of relief or some addition doesn't make sense either. So at a minimum, those are the things coming out of this discussion that I'll make sure we push forward in our agenda going forward. Did I miss anything?
One last thing, I think that we really need to take a a really in-depth look at technology. Because technology has to play a part of this too. I mean, the more we can get to utilize and to do a lot of the analysis and things of that nature, or maybe having a system that's robust enough to have the grantee submit the entry reports and it does some sort of algorithm to view it, to make sure that everything is there. And it doesn't have the the part where the humor, the staff has to actually look at everything. And maybe that'll help us free up some, some people and get funding through the system faster.
Exactly, exactly. Good. Thank you for that discussion. I thought it was important that we dig into the financials and what that means to what we're doing going forward. So let's go to the grants committee report. Gretchen?
Hello, everyone. I'm Gretchen Wharton. I'm a black female, platinum hair, black glasses and a black dress today. Who's going to be manning the slides? Okay. We're going to talk about G O S, the General Operating Support Grant. And this will be a grant that will require the commission to vote on. The commissioners have already received this document a couple of days ahead of time, so they've had a chance to review it in preparation for the vote. And for those of you who are thinking, does she really expect that I can read that? The answer is no. So this will be posted on the website. This entire report will be posted on the website tomorrow. For those of you who are squinting to read this as I speak. Okay, the General Operating Support Grant. Whoa, what happened here? It was better before. Okay, all right, there we go. There were one hundred and fifty-one applications. Of those one hundred and fifty-one applications, there were one hundred and fifty panels. The service organizations were separate, there were ten applications that all of those were able to panel. So we're talking a total of one hundred and sixty total applications for G O S.
Gretchen, just for the curious, a quick word on the one that was not paneled in the generalist.
David, I'm not sure what.
Sure, yeah. So one of the prerequisites for being in the General Operating Support Grant is that organizations have to have received a grant from us in the preceding two years. And this one applicant had not, so that's why they were not included. But we made sure to roll them into the project-based grants.
I was gonna say, so they were not abandoned completely, they've just moved to another category. It's important, it's important we make that note.
No, you're clear, Freddie, that's a, that's a really good point. We didn't abandon them, we just told them another grant to apply for.
Good, thank you.
Okay. With the grant program of general operating support, it's been one of the most popular, simply because we aren't dictating exactly what every dime has to be spent on. It's offered to nonprofit organizations, humanities and arts organizations, whose primary mission focus is one or more of the following areas: dance design, folk and traditional arts, scroll up, please, fiction and nonfiction writing, media arts, music, theater or visual arts. The mission is submitted to the organization's most recent I R S Form 990 must include the words arts humanities and or arts or humanities discipline. More than fifty-one percent of both the organization's previous year's cash expenses and programming services must be devoted to the arts and humanities and or arts education. We had quite a bit of discussion about this, that you'll see as we go down here, as we get deeper into the report, that we really had to focus in on money within that organization that's specifically spent on D C arts and humanities as opposed to overall organization. So when we had the grants committee, we discussed whether or not, grants committee meeting, we discussed whether or not to fund all of the applicants. And we thought long and not that hard, really, because we're all aware that people are still having a lot of challenges. So the decision from the grants committee was to, yes, fund all of the applicants. So that's one hundred and sixty applicants, basically. Number two, scroll up, please. D C-based arts and humanities budget versus total organizational budgets. We had to put a nuanced question in the applications before to to actually define how much money is being spent toward arts and humanities programs within D C proper. Many organizations have large arts and humanities budgets, but not all of that money is spent on D C programs. So the decision was, yes, it has to be D C-based arts and humanities proper. Scroll up, please. Okay, these are the proposed budget cohorts and funding ranges. As you can see, there were eight general cohorts and then one for service. You can see the number of organizations totaling one hundred and sixty. The funding ranges per cohort, with the lowest being forty-five thousand to sixty-five thousand and the highest being one hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred thousand in terms of funding range. And all of that base was based on the organizational's budget and cash expenses. The average awards range from fifty-five thousand to one hundred and ninety thousand. And the total budget by cohort, based on averages, is seven hundred and fifteen thousand to one point six seven. The above cohorts represent the nine panels that took place in April. Do the budget cohorts and funding ranges work? We had two meetings, quite frankly, to discuss all of the detail around this, and the grants committee voted yes that they are so reflective. Scroll up, please. Four, proposed awards. Hold on. The financials. F Y twenty-one financials reflect the first full year of the impact of COVID. Tried to keep funding as close to last year, even with fluctuating budgets. These were some of the considerations that impacted our vote. Funding ranges, these are guides. As we applied formulas, some of the lower-scoring applicants fell below and outside of the cohort range. And then the discussion that we had about D C-based arts and humanities budgets, because we are creating awards based on this, a handful of organizations were panned within their budget-sized peers. But when we had to peel back how much of it was actually D C-based, that flag for funding within a lower range, fell into a lower range. And you'll see that on the charts that'll be highlighted there. I'm gonna go to the resolutions last, because I'd like to take everybody through the screen. So we'll come back to the resolutions after the report. Okay. Now you understand what I said in the beginning about, does she really expect me to be able to read that? Okay. These are the applicant scores and ranking panels for cohort one. That's all, that's way off the screen, so I don't think, I don't know if anybody can see that. No. These were the organizations that were four K to fifty-eight K, as we discussed in the first slide. Next, next cohort, cohort two. Oh, can you roll that up a little bit? Yeah, there we go. Cohort two with the scores from sixty, with cohort two, with sixty-three thousand to one hundred and twenty thousand with, in that particular cohort. And as you can see, the applicants doesn't go all the way down. And the average, there we go, and then the average scores. Again, this will, all of this will be posted on our website tomorrow, if you really want to get in-depth on this one. Next cohort, please. This is the applicant scores and ranking panel for cohort number three, whose budgets were one hundred and thirty-eight thousand to two hundred and forty-four thousand. You can see there are twenty-two there with our scores going from sixty-eight down to fifty-six. Cohort four. Applicant scores and ranking for panel cohort four in the budget range of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand to four hundred and ninety-three. Now you'll see there are two highlighted rows. Can you scroll up a little bit more, please? Keep going there. And those highlighted rows are funding range category based on the lower D C-based arts and humanities budget. We had to go back and reexamine the budgets to make sure they were D C proper arts and humanities. So that's why those two look a little off when you, when you apply the formula. And for each of these slide pages, you'll see that we have highlighted the ones that fell into those categories. Next page, please. Cohort five. There were eighteen there. Cohort six. You can see the differences, the highlighted areas here too. Cohort seven. Cohort eight. Cohort nine. Which is the service organizations. Okay, let's go back to the first page, please. Okay. Whoops, nope, down a little bit more, right there, thank you. Reggie, do you want to open this up for questions first before I make the resolution?
I think that you have to move that they be.
For the vote and then your question, okay.
Yes, the second is not required.
Okay. Representing the grants committee, and this is our recommendation, recommendation, be it resolved that the commission agree, that the commission agrees to the committee's recommendation to fund all one hundred and sixty F Y twenty-twenty-three general operating support applicants. Be it resolved that the commission agreed to the committee's recommendation that funding amounts be based on an applicant's D C-based arts and humanities budget. Be it resolved that the commission agreed to the committee's recommended budget cohorts and funding ranges as presented. And be it resolved that the commission agrees to the committee's recommendation of one hundred and sixty proposed general operating support grant awards for F Y twenty-three for a combined total amount of nineteen million, five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixteen.
Good, thank you for the motion. All right, thank you, didn't need a second, but thank you anyway. I raise a question, any comments, questions, concerns, issues?
This is Quanise, hi. I just wanted to reemphasize what you said earlier in the presentation, Gretchen, that this is the more popular grant program because there's less restrictions. And as we move forward in our grant programming, we need to think about ways that we are not restricting our grant, our grantees. So I just wanted to reemphasize that so that folks know that we hear them. And the fact that this is such a large pool of candidates or grantees means that we have to move towards kind of thinking about how we approach our grant programs.
Thank you, Quanise.
Yeah, I had a question about, so of the, so that's a very high, high number of people and a number of people who are getting it. I'm wondering how many people started, how many organizations started the application and didn't finish?
Go back to the very top, please. Patrick, is that you do? Yeah, keep, keep going, all the way up. Keep going. Okay, slide down just teeny bit. Right there, there were one hundred and fifty-one applications. One hundred and fifty were panels, the one that we talked about in the beginning. And the service organizations, all ten application, applicants were able to panel. The interesting thing about this award, and just to bounce on what Quanise said, in F Y twenty-twenty-one, we had one hundred and thirty-one applicants with one hundred and twenty-eight awards. F Y twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, one hundred and forty-eight with one hundred and forty-five awards. And going into twenty-twenty-three, one hundred and sixty-one, so it is a popular grant. For, I think Quanise mentioned.
If we approve this, then the number of awardees will be at least one sixty.
Yes.
But there's more coming, potentially.
We hope so.
Does that answer your question, Natalie? Good. Other questions?
I have a question. How, how many more are getting them this year than got them last year? How many have we added to the list of grantees?
Well, it went from one hundred and twenty-eight in twenty-twenty-one to one forty-five in twenty-twenty-two, and we'll say one hundred and sixty for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
I think her question is, is your question about new grantees?
Yeah, new ones.
Oh.
David, we have that information, don't we?
Yeah, we do, because in the chart, you'll see some say new to G O S.
And none of these are new grantees to C A H because they all have to have received at least one year of project-based grants in order to be eligible. But there are a good number that are new to to G O S. As Gretchen said, on the chart, we flagged on the right-hand side which ones were new to the program. And there's a lot of new, particularly smaller organizations.
Roll up a little bit so that we can see as an example. Scroll up. Down, sorry. Scroll down, keep going to the next couple of pages. Keep going.
So actually, that first.
To the right.
Yeah, the first sheet of the smallest organizations, if you go up, Patrick.
Cohort number one.
Go up and over.
There's a whole bunch of, usually you'll see where, see where it says F Y twenty-one, G O S, or F Y twenty-two. If there's a gap or a dash, that generally means that they're new. And if you scroll over to the right-hand side.
Scroll over to the right, that's what everybody can't see. See where it says new to G O S. Those all, those all represent applicants that are new to this bit. So there are quite a few new ones.
And just in terms of organizational budget size, about fifty percent of the one hundred and sixty applicants have budgets under five hundred thousand dollars. We have a lot of smaller organizations in the mix.
Can we scroll back up to the first page, please? Right there, okay, stop, please. Thank you, Patrick.
Cor, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Other questions, comments?
Well, I mean, I could go deeper where they come from and all of that, but, but that answers my general question.
Great, great.
Well, excuse me, Cora, if you look at, um, I know you can't see it on the screen, but, um, look at the package. It, it will break everything out by ward.
Okay, but I'm also looking, I'm also looking for the, the demographic of race.
That's not on the chart that you have.
I know, but is, are we collecting that data now?
We actually put a front end to our applications, a demographic overview document. And in that particular document, they are to complete, they, meaning the applicants are to complete those questions. David, how are we doing on that?
We're bringing the Center for Effective Philanthropy on board to do it for us moving forward. Uh, they have a better system than we do, um, and they'll do it for both organizations and individuals.
And I just want to emphasize again, uh, Gretchen. Ward eight is not a reflection of how many African-Americans are minority, brown or black people are getting it. They're all over this city. So when you use Ward eight as a barometer, then you are skewing the outcome because actually Ward eight, Ward seven, Ward five, Ward four, Ward six, I mean, I can go on. There are black people, creatives everywhere. So when I ask that question, I'm not really asking it as it relates to the geography. I'm asking it in terms of the, the, uh, uh, well, you know, the demographics, Steve.
The demographic, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's important.
I agree with you.
Equity is wrapped around that. The lack of equity is really just focused on that. So we can't just say, and I'm not saying that you are, I'm just saying in general, we can't say, well, we've got more people from Ward eight. That does not necessarily tell the story or solve the problem of access and equity for all minorities who need it and who have been left out and who deserve it. So that's why I asked it that way.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. But when I made the comment about you can see the wards, that's just so that you can see the wards of the city is how, how they're broken down. Our demographic overview form was an attempt that we inserted because of the task force recommendation. But I'm glad we found some, the professional organization to do it the right way, David. Thank you.
And when you say they're doing it, what do you mean? Like they're designing, what are, what are they doing?
So they'll design, um, the, the, the survey instrument. Uh, so for example, with the individual demographics overview form, you know, it speaks to not only race and ethnicity, but age, household income. Um, just to get a sense of how valuable these dollars are to, to people in sustaining them. Um, it's harder to get data for organizations, um, you know, unless, uh, employees, uh, you know, offer that information up. You know, understandably, HR professionals are very reticent to start making assumptions about people and their race, ethnicity, orientation, that type of thing. Um, but the Center for Effective Philanthropy has been doing it with a lot of, uh, organizations around the country. And so, you know, we feel that if, if we're going to get it as close to right, that they're the ones that will help us do so.
David, so what, because this is like mission critical, right? This is what we talked about in our task force well over a year ago. And it was a, it was a priority outcome of that body of work. So I guess the question is, how long will it take them to design the instrument? And how long will it be before you feel confident that we're collecting good data? Because all of our equity hinges on our ability to track where the money's going.
Right, I know, I agree with you, Maggie, the, because it, it helped, like the, the very rough and ready one that we, we implemented for this year FY twenty-two and gave us some sort of baseline. And they already have an instrument in place because they've done it with other entities that of course they would adapt for, uh, DC. And, and then they use a, you know, they have a, a database that can slice and dice the, the data as needed. So, um, the, I, it will be helpful, you know, we imagine having the data back to us by the end of the, the calendar year. Um, and it will help us particularly as we move forward with not only funding, but also some of the capacity building initiatives to actually identify, you know, what the need is, um, you know, among organizations and individuals, speaking to some of the pieces that came up.
Your, your expectation, excuse me for interrupting, so your expectation is we would go into twenty twenty-three calendar year, fully, um, steeped in the data that they've offered us in terms of looking at the demographics and other data that we need to address kind of our ongoing performance of equity.
That is the hope, Maggie. Um, you know, uh, again, some data is harder to capture than, than others. And some folks are, so I mentioned with the individual demographic overview form, we included a question, um, around household income. Uh, with the caveat that this, this was not, you know, the answer to this question was not going to limit people from receiving funds. It was really so we better understood who was benefiting or the households were benefiting from the funds. So some folks are reticent to disclose data around orientation, uh, gender identity, um, disability, that type of thing. So, you know, as I said, we, we think that this organization, they're really experienced. And if, you know, they'll do a much better job than we can do doing it on our own, so.
And you know what, David? I, I, I do understand the sensitivity of that. However, if we are ultimately going to use as one of our criteria for getting grants, your performance as it relates to access and, and, and as we said, equity, belonging and inclusion, then it sometime comes out in the organizations themselves that are run by our CEO or CFO and you know it's primarily an organization, uh, blah, blah, blah. But equity as a guideline for grants or be a large part of it is something we really have to figure out. Because we could be given a lot of money and we have done that consistently to people who have not shown any, uh, evidence of anything other than, you know, they are who they are, they take the money. There's no, uh, calculation or record of not only how, who they serve, but more importantly, who, who is doing the serving? If you do it, for instance, one of our favorite places, let's say, uh, you know, Ford Theater. How many people are doing what on the board, behind the curtain, in front of the curtain, uh, in management, C-suites, all of that? Or is it, does that not matter? And if it does not matter, then that's ought to be part of what our equity, uh, criteria is when we're making decisions about who gets money. And you get add, you get points added or taken away based on that. I mean, I thought that's what we said we were going to do. I don't know if, I mean, I, I know this organization is going to help us be much more, you know, specific about it. But as we, as we trudge along in our grant giving, is that a criteria? Is that, is that yet been instituted, uh, Gretchen? That there are points for that and points that are taken away if you don't have it. Cause we can start there, right there.
That's absolutely what we talked about on the task force, Cora, and that's why we put that demographic overview form at, to front end our, um, our applications. Uh, well, obviously it wasn't a sophisticated program, but it did ask a lot of good questions. And I'll be honest with you, I have not seen the results of the reporting even from that right now. So we probably need to start with that, but that is absolutely why we wanted that as a front end to the applications. David, do we have any, um, results of that?
Sure, yeah. So we, we shared the, the individual data with everyone a while back. I'm happy to, to reshare it.
Yeah, please.
Yep. Um, also last year, and we work sort of a, a ways out. So going into FY twenty-two, the GOS applications for FY twenty-two, uh, came in, in February twenty twenty-one. And so that was the first year that we really looked at the criteria and, and, and every program uh, or almost every program had an equity criteria that was pretty heavily weighted with general operating support, thirty percent of, uh, and, and application. The weight of an application, uh, was in equity. And we've also, um, for FY twenty-two with interim reports and final reports, we've started asking those questions around, so what are you doing? Um, in the arena of, of equity and inclusion and access, that type of thing. So, um, so we're, we really are starting to ask those questions and, uh, asking folks to submit, um, you know, plans around, you know, equity as well. So, um, uh, but it, it does take some time, uh, but we are.
If I may, I can make some observations and then make a commitment. Uh, we have started the process of looking at exactly what everyone's speaking about, but it is not mature yet. You know, we don't have the quality of data, we don't have the systems in there yet. But in the panels that I said in in particular, those questions were asked upfront. So to say that we've not impacted from the demographics, anything is not true. But to say it's where it needs to be is also not true. So my commitment is, and I've added this to the list of other things that I put that we have to focus on, both understanding the demographics, the demographics, not just the geography of our grantees and our grants, what they get, as well as tracking that information and constantly improving upon it until we get to a point where we're really comfortable with it. It is a journey that we are on. We're at the very beginning of the journey. Uh, so I observed that we have some, done some, but not all that we intend to do. But my commitment is that we're going to get very serious about this and improve it over time.
Chairman Ben Lee. Quanise, wait a minute, Quanise's hand has been up.
I'm sorry, Quanise?
Yeah, sorry. So I just wanted to say, like, I think, um, yeah, we are very foundational in what we're doing with the equity work and collecting the data on that. So, but one of the thoughts that I did have is, um, one, is it possible for the conversations that you're having with the Center for Effective Philanthropy? I don't know what, what organization you said, to, for the idea committee to be a part of those conversations. And then two, I think that at some point we have to, um, not, uh, base everything off of quantitative data and start looking at qualitative data. So I know, David, we've incorporated some questions in the grants, uh, application. But what are some ways that people can tell us the holistic story? And the reason I want the holistic story is because people can bullshit us and I don't want us being bullshitted. So like people can bullshit their way through, if they have the language, I was in a workshop earlier today and they said, we, we're seeing people speak the language, but we're not seeing the work being done. So I want us to be able to, to move forward and actually see that work and that impact being done because I'm tired of people bullshitting us.
To that point, Quanise, this is a journey. And there will qualitative and quantitative measures coming together to assess where we are and where we should go. But it's not done overnight, but we're pushing hard for it. And I make the commitment that we will continue to push this. I'm sorry.
One thing would be good is if we saw that, like with these reports, like if there's, there's equity reports, you know, with the data that we've already been collecting since we voted to collect them. Like, can we do that? I mean, is it possible for us the next time we meet to see like exactly where we are?
Then if I may, Quanise, somebody asked the idea committee to keep us honest, not to necessarily do the work, but keep us honest on that. And on reporting this as Natalie suggested.
Okay, got it.
Maggie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna actually ditto everything Quanise just said, uh, because I was gonna say a lot of what she just said. But in addition to that, I think it might be beneficial, Chairman Ben Lee, if you're open to it, to have the Center for Strategic Philanthropy just present their final recommendation on the survey instrument that they propose using so that we can all feel comfortable with it. As Quanise has noted many times, you can do good things and bad things with data. Um, and we just want to make sure that it's working to our full benefit.
Yep, that's part of my asking the idea committee to keep us honest. So yes, Quanise, if we could connect with that center and make sure before they go and do it, that we understand the process, the approach and have a level of comfort with it. Cause you know, I've, I've labored in those fields as a consultant for three decades and there are many ways that the approach can be done. Not all are, have the fidelity or follow the intent. So let's make sure that we do that the right way with them. And David, if you can help us with that connection, that would be great.
Of course.
Good. Um, this is longer than anybody would like, but this is a very important topic. This is really important work we're doing and we're not going to have a meeting in August if you all agree to the vote. So we've gone a little bit longer today, my apologies. Any other questions or can I now go to the roll call on this, these resolutions en masse?
Maggie, you're still, your hand's still up?
No, I just, it's coming down now. Thanks, Gretchen.
So I'm going to go through the, uh, resolution, the, the resolution as it appears on the screen. Um, and vote a or nay or no vote. Stacy?
Yes, I vote yes.
Cora?
I abstain.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Uh, Mariah?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
So that's one, two, three, four, three, six, eight, I can't count. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, uh, yeses, no, no's and one abstention. And so it carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
The hard work of the grants committee to get us here. And thank you all for the active participation in this conversation. This is what we're here for. So I don't want to rubber stamp stuff or just pass things through. And I promise you, the list that I've made here, I commit to us getting through all those things, including this last discussion on the demographics. And us really living the equity story that we put forth and we'd like to live. Where am I? Yes. Uh, the next term, item of business is the Public Art Committee Report. Maggie?
Thank you, Chairman Ben Lee. Um, I'll do this quickly. We have two items. The FY twenty-two Murals DC, um, just a point of, of note here. It is the fifteenth anniversary of this program, um, which is an exciting milestone. Uh, the FY twenty-two Murals DC program will fund twelve muralists of the final roster recommended by the Public Arts Committee on our June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Um, we are requesting as part of this to increase the program funding by eighty thousand dollars. That would take the total funding for FY twenty-two for Murals DC to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, the program includes six walls secured by the program with our partner, the Department of Public Works. Um, one wall is an alleyway that can accommodate seven artists. And the other five locations are individual walls across the district that range in size and complexity. So I won't go through all this because you got this as a pre-read. Um, but the request is the addition of the eighty thousand dollars to expand, uh, the grants in this area. Any quest, any questions?
Any questions? Do we need to vote on this or is this just FY?
No, actually, at the last meeting, um, if I, if I may, the last meeting, the, the commission authorized up to two hundred thousand.
Exactly.
We, this is what we did.
Good.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you. So thank you for following through on, uh, the decision that was made by the commission at the last meeting. Uh, next on the agenda is new business.
Hey, actually, we have, we have another.
Four more items.
Sorry, sorry. I'm anxious, sorry.
Just quickly, um, the other update, very exciting update, the Color of the Curve program. You all recall this is the school safety program. And just a note here, you know, I can't say enough about this program in terms of if we have the opportunity to keep a single child safe in the District of Columbia in the crosswalks, um, that is a very worthy endeavor. And so I'm very, very excited, um, to let you all know that we have completed the program at four schools. They include, um, the Harris Elementary School. And that, as you may recall, is The Future is Bright Slow Down by Adrian Gaither. Uh, the Houston Elementary School, um, which is in northeast, uh, Force Field by J.D. Deardorff. The Plummer Elementary School in southeast, Adventure to Hidden Treasure by Candace Taylor. And then the Drew Elementary School, also in northeast, Grow Your Garden by Ashley J. Williams. So a big congratulation to the staff and to our partners at the Department of Public Works, as well as all of the mentioned artists. It's incredible work that's being done.
If, and if I could, Maggie, so for, um, and Deidra has a quick show and tell. So Patrick, maybe you could put that up and I can, you can just go through this very quickly. Um, the, it, our partners were Department of Transportation and the DC Public Schools. Pardon? So our partners for this project was, um, the Department of Transportation, Art in the Right-Away Program and the DC Public Schools. So Deidra, you know, knew to our staff that this was her project for this year, so, or for her short few months that she's been here. So Deidra, if you want to, it's late, so, but if you can just sort of go through very quickly, um, the, the project.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. So I'm Deirdre Darden, Public Art Coordinator. And I just prepared a little synopsis of the this year's Color of the Curve to show you the completed murals and some process, some shots of the artist's process. So Patrick, if you can scroll down.
You might just want to jump to the, the pictures just because of the lateness of the day.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, the, this program started on May fifth with a kickoff event for Bike to School Day, where each artist went to their assigned school and there, we were, had a. where each artist went to their assigned school, and there, we were, had a partnership with Positive Chalk DC, and chalk was placed outside of the schools, and a school was letting out kids. Um, talked with the artists about different designs that they wanted, things they loved about their school, things that they thought about that made them feel safe, would make them feel safe. Um, and that was a good chance for the artists to connect with students in their schools. And these are some pictures of kids drawing in chalk outside of their schools. Next slide. So um, as part of the process, there was a technical assistant, since these are ground murals, which are a new landscape for a lot of artists. There's a particular way to clean up the street before you paint it. So we had a technical assistant as part of the grant process, and here she is, Chelsea, um, showing the four artists, just some tips on how to prepare the ground before they paint them. Next slide. So this is our first artist, J D Deardorff, and as mentioned, he was partnered with Houston Elementary School. He was actually able to go inside the classroom and have a session with the students where they colored on a page that he created and talked about different colors and designs that they would like. And the next slide will show his completed mural, so you can see how he was able to like almost directly translate what the students wanted to see in their mural onto the mural in the, outside of their school. And the title for this is Force Field. Next slide. Then we had Adrian Gaither, these are some action shots of when the mural was being installed outside of CW Harris. And in the next slide, you'll see that um the colors, the which she chose, bright colors really related to a sculpture that already exists outside of the school. So it's kind of a nice match aesthetically, and the students were also able to contribute to what they wanted to see in those colors, what that meant to them. So yes, this is a finished mural, and all of these schools are in Ward Seven, and they're about five minutes from each other. And D Dot is the one that identifies based on the highest need, um, the intersections and the schools that get selected for the program. So if you want to advance to the next slide. Then this is Candace Taylor and her team, each artist had between like one and four assistants to help, you know, install the mural and to do it in a timely manner. So this is Candace's team keeping cool, and they were using stencils, um, using some stencils in their design for Plumber Elementary. And then the next slide will show the completed mural. It's very like tropical and fun. And then lastly, we have, you can go to the next slide. This is Ashley J Williams working um with her team and using her stencils outside of Drew Elementary. And if you go to the next slide. This is the completed mural, and this is really fun, the ram is the mascot of Drew. So that's why they wanted to see the ram there, and a lot of the kids really loved music and wanted bright colors. Um, and if you go to the next slide. Unique thing about this year is that we put up QR codes next to the murals, so passerby's are able to hover over the QR code, and that will take them to a webs, to D Dot's Arrow website, which then has a dedicated page for each artist. So this, oh. You were showing it and then it went away, but if Patrick's able to bring that back up on the screen, yeah. So this is the, oh, oh, what, the web, this is the landing page. If you scroll down a little bit, there's a map that shows um last year's murals, Casey's murals, so the cluster in northeast is this year FY twenty-two, all the schools. The one that's closer to Columbia Heights was FY twenty-one.
And then there's also guys.
When you hover.
Yeah. If you, if you hover over one of the names, one of the artists' names, then you'll get the deep dive in the information about that particular artist, so. Yeah.
That's beautiful work.
Yeah, and then it links, links back to our website as well, and we're working on what that's going to look like more.
I was going to say tremendous congrats on this, I remember when this notion first came up, and for it to end like this, or be where we are now. Congratulations and thanks to the staff and everyone who made this happen, this is amazing.
I was gonna say the same thing, because I I remember Ebony Rose Thompson, the Ward Seven Education person coming in and raising this, and it was just last fall.
Yes.
You know, so never say the Arts Commission can't work fast.
Yes, turn it on the dime.
We're slowing it down for next year.
No, no, not really.
So it's going to be a reg, an ongoing program, and um the schools are even looking to assign a teaching artist to work, to also work with the artists, the teaching artists in each of the individual schools. So it's growing, and it's growing um as capacity can stand, so.
But again.
We know four schools is about what we can control, what we can manage, so we're going to do another kind of a round and starting a little bit earlier. And then, you know, if we need to bring in a contractor or something else to expand it to more schools, and we'll do that too. But it is, um, it's very intensive and and time consuming, so.
I was going to say again, thanks for rallying to get it done this quickly, because I answered, could have been, okay, we'll do that next year. But we got it done, and now we're going to find a way to do it on an ongoing basis, so thank you.
Yes.
This is the spirit which this commission needs to work and wants to work. That we hear an issue, we treat it with urgency, we do what we can now, and we do more and better later. We don't wait until four decimal points and we have it perfect before we do anything, so thank you for that. I'm sorry, Hector?
Yes, is there um any contribution momentarily from any of these agencies, D Dot and Department of Education?
Yes, so, um, so, yes, so D Dot does have the financial responsibility of installing the curve extensions, that's part of their programming. Um, so, so that's their financial contribution. And with DC Public Schools, they are um now looking at bringing on a teaching artist who can help um coordinate and corral the teaching artists who will be working with our artists. But the monetary um funding to, and the grants all come from us.
Okay, it'd be great to get more money from them, because I could.
Well, mo- a lot of these agencies don't have, I mean, that's kind of, when we partner with Public Art, they have the real estate, we have the money. And so that's kind of how it works, I mean, because we have money, but we don't have access to the real estate. So i- it may not be a cash one-to-one match, a lot of times we try to ask that, but in in instances like this, the cost of them putting in these curb extensions, which they're doing anyway, is not a, it's not a match going into the dollars, but we wouldn't have that, that canvas to paint on if they weren't making the financial commitment to put in these curb extensions.
Good, I'm I'm going to move us along because we are over time. If you will allow, if you will allow me, if you will allow me, I will move us on because we're short on time. Uh, so let's go to the ne- the new business. Um, Hector's going to give us an update on recent efforts to collaborate with the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Pioneering and Development. And again, Hector, since the time is short, I would ask you to be very, very brief, really just give us a heads up on what's going on there.
Okay, we'll do. Uh, we had a recent, on July eighteenth, we had a meeting actually with John Falcicchio, who was the head of the of DEMPAD. And he offered us some great suggestions and ideas as to how we could go about realizing something that we are really very concerned about. And in fact, this is shared, you know, very much by Gretchen, who who was part of this meeting as well, as well as Reggie. And it's actually, the whole notion, the end goal is basically how do we create or fund a live workspace, particularly in the creative communities that that we're trying to develop within the district. There, many of you are familiar that there has been funding for Ward Eight, uh, the Anacostia area, um, for an arts district that already is pretty well live and and somewhat thriving. But this new funding will give them um amplitude to be able to expand. And what we're trying to do, and Gretchen has arranged for us to meet on August uh ninth, to be exact, to have a discussion as to how this project could also include low-income housing, or should I say, housing? That is lo- a live workspace that can be utilized by crea- uh, by bringing in artists um with affordable housing. Now, the key there is also, and the emphasis is to create an arts um economy, which has viability plus also would support growth within the community, and people within the community can participate in this housing uh pro- proposal we're trying to do. Now, here's an area where we were talking earlier about excess funds. We've got to bring some cookies to this particular picnic, if we're going to be listened to and participate. So we've got to find a way to bring money, resources to bear, so that we can support the growth within this community in Anacostia and in Ward Eight, to be able to expand this so it could realize this particular goal. Gretchen is going to be talking to them frankly, or trying to discover some schools, some buildings that have not been been um developed that are blithe in essence, and can use the development money to create this housing and workspace that is so key for an arts academy. Gretchen, do you want to add anything to this, because I know it's your pet project as well, very much so, and you've been working on for years?
Our pet project, no, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'm adding this DEMPAD initiative to my growing list of things we need to focus on. And from my perspective, this checks at least three boxes in what I've been calling our collective agenda. The first is supporting artists in a way that we have not been able to support artists in the past. The second is advancing this notion of the creative economy and what that really means in a tangible way. And the third is um the the recognition of our interdependence with the mayor's office and being more engaged collaboratively in partnership with the mayor's office. So this is an important initiative for us, both for those we're trying to serve and for what we're trying to do as a commission, and moving into that level of collaboration with the with the mayor's office. So thank you, Hector, and thank you, Gretchen, who has been pushing this for a while, and finally, we're going to get it to some real fruition. Uh, with that, if I may, uh, the commission has traditionally canceled the August meeting while the agency focuses on the panel process and preparing grant recommendations to be voted on in September. Is there any objection to canceling the August meeting? Here, no objection, the August meeting is canceled, and the next meeting of the commission will be September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any other new business?
Yes, I may, at this meeting, um, John Falcicchio to present so that he could give us some updates as to how some of this funding is being used.
So to be clear, John is going to present at our September meeting. He's going to go to our September meeting and present, which is also advancing the interaction uh between the commission and the mayor's office. So we're, we're happy about that. Um, thank you all. Again, the next regular meeting, the commission will be held Monday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The time is now seven twenty-five PM, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice summer.
Nice summer, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.